Bible study at the House of Abundance, San Antonio, Texas. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, what a delight it is for us to come together to study your word. We confess that your word is life to our spirit. As we go into our lesson tonight, open our hearts of understanding so that we may receive what you want to teach us. Help us to grow and be nourished by your word. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Today, our topic is expansion of the church. And we're going to read Acts 8. Expansion of the church. Acts, chapter 8. I'm going to read the first eight verses. Now Saul was consenting to his death, that is, to Stephen's death. At that time, a great persecution arose against the church, which was at Jerusalem. And they were all scattered throughout the regions of Judea and Samaria, except the apostles. And devout men carried Stephen to his burial and made great lamentation over him. As for Saul, he made havoc of the church, entering every house and dragging off men and women, committing them to prison. Therefore, those who were scattered went everywhere preaching the word. Then Philip went down to the city of Samaria and preached Christ to them. And the multitudes, with one accord, heeded the things spoken by Philip, hearing and seeing the miracles which he did; for unclean spirits, crying with a loud voice, came out of many who were possessed, and many who were paralyzed and lame were healed; and there was great joy in that city. Chapters 7 of the Acts of the Apostles ended with the death of Stephen, the first Christian martyr. He was stoned to death. Some godly men came and buried him with great lamentation. One of those who witnessed his death and actually supported it was a young man named Saul. The Bible says, "His accusers took off their coats and laid them at the feet of a young man named Saul." The killing of Stephen must have had a great impact on him and encouraged him to go after the Christians and persecute them. Verse 3 says, "Saul made havoc of the church, entering every house and dragging off men and women, committing them to prison." Saul himself made mention of his exploits as a great persecutor of the Christians in several passages. In Acts, chapter 22, let's open at Acts 22, verses 4 to 5. It has this to say, "I persecuted, I persecuted this way to the death, binding and delivering into prisons men and women, as also the high priest bears me witness, and all the council of the elders, from whom I also received letters to the brethren, and went to Damascus to bring in chains even those who were there, to Jerusalem to be punished." And in Philippians, chapter 3, verses 5 to 6, he has this to say, Philippians 3, verses 5 to 6, "Succumb size the eighth day of the stock of Israel, of the tribe of Benjamin, a Hebrew of the Hebrews, concerning the law, a pharisee; concerning zeal, persecuting the church; concerning the righteousness, which is in the law, blameless." He was so zealous for the Lord. A great wave of persecution of the followers of Christ began after the death of Stephen. Saul, later called Paul, seems to be the leader of the widespread persecution. The result of the persecution was that many believers were forced out of Jerusalem and scattered all over the regions of Judea and Samaria. But this was exactly what Jesus commissioned the apostles to do. His command to them was that to take the mission, to take the gospel from Jerusalem to Judea and Samaria and to the utmost parts of the earth. Up till that time, all believers' activities had been centralized in Jerusalem. So God used this persecution to start a great ministry work of the church, taking the good news to different places and to different people. Everywhere they went, they preached the word of God with boldness. In short, what was meant for evil turned out to be good. The persecution of the believers was intended to stop the spread of the gospel. But what happened? God used this very persecution to scatter the believers, who in turn took the gospel wherever they went. Who knows? That trial you're going through may be what God is using to lift you up. So why don't we just trust in him? Philip at Samaria. This is not the same Apostle Philip, but Philip, one of the seven dickens, chosen to help the food distribution program in the church. He was a Greek-speaking Jew, but was full of the Holy Spirit and wisdom, like Stephen. Acts 3, Acts 6, 3. Acts 6, 3. Philip went down to the city of Samaria to preach Christ to them. Even though the Jews and the Samaritans had a hostile relationship between them, this was not the first time that Samaritans were hearing the good news. In John, chapter 4, John, chapter 4, we read about how Jesus passed through Samaria and actually had a conversation with a Samaritan woman at a well, which led to his revealing himself to her as the Messiah, who could give her the living water. That conversation proved to be a life-changing one for the Samaritan woman. She left her water pot and ran back to the village to tell others and invite them to come and see Jesus for themselves. Many Samaritans went and believed in Jesus, and they begged him to stay at their village, which he did for two days. Listen what they said, listen to what they said to the woman. "Now we believe because we heard him speak ourselves, not just because of what you told us. He is indeed the Savior of the world." So, the seed of the gospel had already been sown by Jesus in Samaria, even before Philip got there. No wonder when Philip preached Christ to them, the response of the people was overwhelming. They believed in the Lord Jesus Christ. Moreover, miracles and signs accompanied his preaching. People were healed and set free from evil spirits and were baptized, thus experiencing spiritual salvation. And verse 8 says, "And there was great joy in that city." Now let's read on from, we're going to read verses 9, Acts, chapter 8, verses 9 to 25. "But there was a certain man called Simon, who previously practiced sorcery in the city and astonished the people of Samaria, claiming that he was someone great, to whom they all gave heed, from the least to the greatest, saying, 'This man is the great power of God.' And they heeded him, because he had astonished them with sorceries for a long time. But when they believed Philip, as he preached the things concerning the kingdom of God and the name of Jesus Christ, both men and women were baptized. Then Simon himself also believed; and when he was baptized, he continued with Philip and was amazed, seeing the miracles and signs which were done. Now when the apostles, who were at Jerusalem, heard that Samaria had received the word of God, they sent Peter and John to them, who, when they had calmed down, prayed for them that they might receive the Holy Spirit; for as yet it had fallen upon none of them; they had only been baptized in the name of Jesus. Then they laid hands on them, and they received the Holy Spirit. And when Simon saw that through the laying of the apostles' hands the Holy Spirit was given, he offered them money, saying, 'Give me this power also, that anyone on whom I lay hands may receive the Holy Spirit.' But Peter said to him, 'Your money perish with you, because you thought that the gift of God could be purchased with money. You have neither part nor portion in this matter; for your heart is not right in the sight of God. Repent, therefore, of this your wickedness, and pray, God, if perhaps the thought of your heart may be forgiven you; for I see that you are poisoned by bitterness and bound by iniquity.' Then Simon answered and said, 'Pray to the Lord for me, that none of the things which you have spoken may come upon me.' So when they had testified and preached the word of the Lord, they returned to Jerusalem, preaching the gospel in many villages of the Samaritans. Here we are introduced to a man called Simon, a sorcerer or magician. He had been practicing sorcery in the city for a long time and had been ascribing greatness to himself. He claimed to be a great man, who was a, which was a display of pride. We must beware of pride; for the Bible exhausts us to be clothed with humility; for God resists the proud, but gives grace to the humble." 1 Peter 5, 5. Not only did Samaritans respect him as someone great, but they actually referred him as the great power of God. That statement borders on blasphemy, doesn't it? As Philip preached about the things of the kingdom and the name of Jesus, people believed. Men and women were baptized. Simon, the sorcerer, also believed and was baptized and continued with Philip, amazed at the miracles and signs which were done. When the apostles at Jerusalem heard about what was happening in Samaria, they sent Peter and John there. When they got there, they saw that they had received the word of God and had been baptized in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, but they had not received the baptism of the Holy Spirit. So they laid hands on them, and they received the Holy Spirit. When you believe in the Lord Jesus Christ, the Holy Spirit comes to dwell in you. But when you receive the baptism of the Holy Spirit, as the disciples did on the day of Pentecost, you receive the empowerment of the Holy Spirit. We discuss this at length when we studied what happened to the apostles on the day of Pentecost. When Simon saw that the Holy Spirit was given through the laying of hands, he offered them money. He said, "Give me this power also, that anyone on whom I lay hands on may receive the Holy Spirit." Simon wanted the gift of the Holy Spirit and power, as well as the authority to pass on the gift. He thought he could buy the gift for selfish and ungodly reasons. Peter rebuked him strongly. "Your money perish with you," he said, "because you thought that the gift of God could be purchased with money." God's gifts are freely given. That is why salvation, the greatest of all gifts, is given freely to all who believe. Isaiah 55, verse 1. Isaiah 55, verse 1 says, "Oh, everyone who thirsts, come to the waters; and you who have no money, come buy and eat; yes, come and buy wine and milk, without money and without price." Salvation is free. Peter, with the ability to discern spirits, which is another gift of the Holy Spirit, was able to see through Simon and know that his heart was not right with God. Peter continued, "You have neither part, part nor portion in this matter," he said, "for your heart is not right in the sight of God. Repent, therefore, of this your wickedness, and pray, God, if perhaps the thought of your heart may be forgiven you; for I see that you are poisoned with bitterness and bound by iniquity." One of the reasons why Simon, Simon was rebuilt, according to Peter, was that his heart was not right in the sight of God. Would it be that Simon's profession of faith was not genuine? If that was the case, Philip ought to have known, or did he just make an assumption? But in chapter 8, verse 13, Acts 8, 13, we read, "Then Simon himself believed. He believed, and he was baptized. He began following Philip wherever he went." I don't think we should be hasty in questioning Simon's faith. The fact that we are true Christians does not remove the fact that we are still prone to sin and that our faith cannot be tested. We must beware of thinking that we are of right standing with God just because we profess Christianity. We are baptized, we go to church and attend church meetings and pay our tithes, et cetera, et cetera. He began, "I believe that Simon's faith was genuine before he was baptized, but his faith was tested, as some of us believers can sometimes have our faith tested, which is why Paul called him to repentance and prayer. Paul told him, 'Repent, therefore, of this your wickedness, and pray, if perhaps the thought of your heart may be forgiven you.'" Verse 22. Thank God, the Bible says, if we confess our sins, God is faithful and just to forgive us our sins and to cleanse us from all unrighteousness. 1 John 1, verse 9. 1 John 1, 9. Simon's response to Peter's rebuke was immediate. "Pray to the Lord for me," he said, "that none of these things which you have spoken may come upon me." Peter and John preached the gospel in many of the Samaritan villages as they returned to Jerusalem. Now let's read the rest of the chapter, beginning from verse 26. Verse 26. Christ is preached to an Ethiopian. "Now an angel of the Lord spoke to Philip, saying, 'Arise and go towards the south along the road, which goes down from Jerusalem to Gaza. This is desert.' So he arose and went; and behold, a man of Ethiopia, a eunuch of great authority, under Candace, the queen of the Ethiopians, who had charge of all her treasury and had come to Jerusalem to worship, was returning; and sitting in his chariot, he was reading Isaiah the prophet. Then the Spirit said to Philip, 'Go near and overtake that chariot.' So Philip ran to him and heard him reading the prophet Isaiah and said, 'Do you understand what you are reading?' And he said, 'How can I, unless someone guides me?' And he asked Philip to come up and sit with him. The place in the scripture which he read was this: 'He was led as a sheep to the slaughter; and as a lamb before its shearer is silent, so he opened not his mouth; in his humiliation his justice was taken away; and who will declare his generation? For his life is taken from the earth.' So the eunuch answered Philip and said, 'I ask you, of whom does the prophet say this? Of himself or of some other man?' Then Philip opened his mouth and, beginning at this scripture, preached Jesus to him. Now, as they went down the road, they came to some water; and the eunuch said, 'See, here is water. What hinders me from being baptized?' Then Philip said, 'If you believe with all your heart, you may.' And he answered and said, 'I believe that Jesus Christ is the Son of God.' So he commanded the chariot to stand still; and both Philip and the eunuch went down into the water, and he baptized him. Now when they came out of the water, the Spirit of the Lord caught Philip away, so that the eunuch saw him no more; and he went on his way rejoicing. But Philip was found as Azotaph; and passing through, he preached in all the cities till he came to Caesarea. Philip's preaching ministry in Samaria was going on very successfully, with many people turning to God and being baptized. But he had to leave Samaria because God had another assignment for him. God had a divine appointment for him to meet an Ethiopian eunuch on a desert, on a desert road from Jerusalem to Gaza. Philip obeyed promptly, without any questioning. Anyone serving the Lord must be ready to move when God says, "Move." We must be willing to be led by the Holy Spirit. After all, Romans, chapter 4, chapter 8, verse 14. Romans 8:14 says, "For as many as are led by the Spirit of God, these are the sons of God." So Philip followed the leading of the Holy Spirit. One may wonder why God would move Philip from a place where many people were responding to the gospel to a lonely desert road to meet just one man, the Ethiopian eunuch. It is because God cares for one person just as much as it cares for a multitude. Moreover, God must have seen that the eunuch was devoted to him because he had traveled a long distance to go and worship in Jerusalem. God must have known how his heart yearned to have someone explain this portion of the scripture that he was reading to him. Moreover, the man's conversion would be the beginning of taking the gospel beyond Samaria and Judea to the ends of the earth. Acts 1, 8. The Ethiopian eunuch was a high government official. He was in charge of the treasury of Ethiopia, under Queen Candace. He was seated in his chariot and reading from the book of Isaiah. The Holy Spirit continued to lead Philip. The Spirit said to him, 'Go near and overtake this chariot.' God had arranged that divine meeting between him and the Ethiopian eunuch. Philip ran to him and heard him reading a passage from the prophet Isaiah. "Do you understand what you are reading?" Philip asked him. "How can I, unless someone guides me?" the eunuch replied. And he invited Philip to come up into the chariot with him. So Philip took advantage of this opportunity to preach Christ to him, beginning with a passage he was reading. The passage the eunuch was reading is from Isaiah 53, verses 7 to 8. Isaiah 53, 7 to 8. Let's just go over this one from the, as the Acts of the Apostles puts it, "He was led as a sheep to the slaughter; and as a lamb before its shearer is silent, so he opened not his mouth; in his humiliation his justice was taken away; and who will declare his generation? For his life is taken from the earth." The eunuch wanted to know whether the prophet was speaking about himself or about someone else. Philip showed him that the suffering one was Jesus, who had to suffer and die for the sins of the world. He preached Christ to him. The eunuch responded positively to Philip's The eunuch responded positively to Philip's message and requested that he be baptized as they came to some water along the road. Philip said, "If you believe with all your heart, that's all that it takes." The Ethiopian eunuch said, "I believe that Jesus Christ is the Son of God." And he was baptized. Immediately Philip was supernaturally transported to the city of Azotos, which is the same as Ashdod in, in the land of the Philistines. He passed through all the cities, preaching till he arrived, he arrived in Caesarea, where he stayed for many days. Indeed, the conversion of the Gentiles had been started by Philip. The Philip, the evangelist, as is referred to in Acts twenty-one, verse eight, and would continue by Saul, who at this time was still a great persecutor of the Christians. That's what we will read about next week. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the way your Spirit has ministered to us in our study tonight. It is amazing how you use the persecution of the believers in Jerusalem to bring about the spread of the gospel and the expansion of the church. Father, give us concern for the lost and the heart of an evangelist. Help us to be sensitive to your Spirit and lead us to those who need to hear about Jesus. We praise and worship you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Join us next time when we shall be studying the conversion of Saul in Acts, chapter nine.